Yeah. Oh, it's not on? Okay. I was just waiting for the screen to come up. I am a creature of habit. All right, thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the planning commission meeting. It is four thirty on Thursday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. First order of business is the approval of the May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four minutes. Are there any corrections or additions?
Just a real minor one. I usually go by Kate Mako or Ms. Mako, not Mr. Mako. So, just a minor typo.
Okay. Which page? Oh, okay, I see it.
Approval of minutes.
Yeah, and under the approval of the minutes, yes. Is there anything else that needs to be addressed?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the change for the May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed minutes to be filed. Public hearing to open on the four small area plans for downtown Upper Cottonwood, East Airport, and northwest New Ulm-Milford areas. City, John?
Thank you.
David?
To start with, you received these documents, you know, yesterday. And so you may or may not have had sufficient time to review them. If you wish to defer action on them, that is certainly your prerogative to do so. You know, could be, a final decision could be made, you know, at your next meeting. Or we could schedule a special meeting.
Next month, you mean?
Yeah.
Final action? Has anybody, how does everybody feel about that? Has anybody had a chance to review them? Or do you want to do some discussion, discussion before we do? Or do you want to just proceed with the presentation of it?
I'm fine proceeding with the presentation.
Yeah, I would say we.
Move forward.
Look at the presentation. If there's, if questions come up during a discussion, then, you know.
That would be the, the next thing I'd like to note, that if you do have questions during the course of the presentation, that you would immediately ask them. And so John and I are going to split the presentation. And so I will, we'll start. The applicant in this particular case is the Community Development Department on behalf of the City of New Ulm. A little bit of history, Short Elliott Hendrickson was retained in May, May third, two thousand and twenty two to prepare a new comprehensive plan. And as part of that project, they're also required to prepare for small area plans, which is what we are focusing on today. Those plans are referred to, as was indicated, downtown, Upper Cottonwood, East Airport, northwest New Ulm-Milford. And maps have been provided that should allow you to have a pretty good idea of where those areas are located. Definition of a small area plan is one that provides guidance on land use, transportation, housing, environmental protection, and parks, natural space uses, and improvements in a specified geographic area. The ultimate goal of a small area plan is to improve the quality of life within that geographic area, as well as a greater community. I should note that a small area plan should be reviewed as frequently as you would review the comprehensive plan. So you can maybe, you know, those can be piggybacked together. The city zoning ordinance, zoning map, and subdivision regulations will need to align with the general provisions of the four small area plans. So everything should work together. The small area plans were largely developed during the rapid planning sessions that took place in October nineteenth to the twenty second in two thousand and twenty two. Those took place down at the senior center. So there are several concepts that are part of each plan, and I'd like to go over those. I will kind of abbreviate the information, but there are seven of them. The first is that we're looking for compact and connected development. The second is that New Ulm has a unique pattern of development, and that should be used in, you know, future development as it takes place. The third is that there's a shortage of housing in New Ulm, and a variety of housing types is perhaps necessary to, to meet that need. The fourth is that we should be offering a mix of housing and services within easy reach of our neighborhoods and. Then number five is to have a connected network of streets, sidewalks, and trails. Six is to use a variety of sustainable approaches for developing land and housing. And seven is to develop distinct and unique places. So now we'll start with the first small area plan, and that is for the downtown. And the location of this plan area is from Fourth North to Second South, and from German to Broadway, so that is twelve city blocks, approximate total of fifty-five acres. There are three different zoning districts within that area. The small area plan presents nine different concepts and ideas in addition to the ones that I just provided. And there are a total of eight subject areas that were identified. In this particular plan, there is a focus on improvements within public rights of lay area, alleys. There is not a lot of emphasis placed on private property. And you'll note in the staff recommendation that the infrastructure in the downtown area, so the areas that are being examined as part of this plan, that that infrastructure is generally in pretty good condition and is not being actively considered for replacement at this time. So rather than, you know, identifying specific recommendations, we asked the consultant to provide us with options, because a lot of the decisions with regards to the, some of the content within this small area plan is going to take place, you know, many years from now. So we, we asked them to give us some idea of what, what our options might be at that time. I would then, though, like to identify perhaps what we might consider some near-term activities or options that exist, and this is something that staff prepared. And it's, I think, a lot of it's to generate some discussion on, you know, what, what the needs are within the downtown area. And some of the, the items that we're going to identify are fairly obvious to, to all of us. So number one is to find and facilitate the location of a mix of people generators, businesses in the downtown area, and that could include retail, services, entertainment, civic, institutional offices, and housing. But I think ultimately what we're looking for is we, we need to generate reasons for people to come downtown. The second thing is to identify funding sources that could assist with the financing of building improvements that would permit occupancy by new businesses, or for that matter, businesses that wish to expand. Number three is provide opportunities for grants, loans, and other financial incentives that encourage a renovation of historic store facades, preservation of existing building stock, and rehabilitation of upper-level housing areas. The fourth is that New Ulm's unique history should be preserved through the use of decorative landscaping, arts, and culture in the downtown area. The city should identify opportunities that create a more appealing streetscape, including public art, attractive and street accessible sidewalks, colorful landscaping, plazas, gathering spaces, wayfinding, signage, and street furniture. Number five, we should facilitate the development of freestanding as well as upper-floor housing in the downtown area. And then six, there should be a focus on finding and facilitating the location of food vendors into the downtown area. Potential vendors that could include food trucks, new restaurants, cafes, food stands, you know, pubs. Again, things that would bring people into the downtown area. Are there any questions regarding the downtown section? That's a summary on our part.
Yeah, I guess I found it interesting that you, that item six, you thought should focus on food vendors. When we do seem to have a food truck sitting there, and new restaurants coming and going and, and things happening, I think we need more than restaurants and accountants and hairdressers on Main Street. I think we need some business that would generate sales revenue. You know, we just lost another clothing store downtown. There, I don't, I think there's one clothing store yet now downtown there. There's a resale shop downtown. Is there anything else? Three. What's the third one?
Oh, inspired.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
The weekend one, or occasional one that's.
On the side street.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but we, we don't have businesses other than hairdressers, attorneys, accountants, banks. There's nothing to generate foot traffic.
No, well, I, I think we need to look at the downtown area perhaps through a different lens. You know, the traditional downtown is probably gone.
I look at other towns, like, and I'm going to bring up St. Peter and Hutchinson too. Medillia has places you can walk into, and you can shop, you can eat. There's a reason to stroll the street. There's no reason to stroll the street if you're just going to a restaurant to eat. You come out, you get back in your car, and you go away. I think we need something downtown that gives people a reason to stay downtown and shop, not just eat. That's my personal, eating and drinking seems to be the only thing on this. Does anybody else have any comments?
I'm trying to think how that works in kind of the new world of, of downtowns and what that looks like. I mean, the days of having a, you know, a Retschlof hardware, they're just gone. So that kind of generates a lot of foot traffic, but I don't know how you, what that looks like now. I don't know.
Well, I can walk the street of Mankato downtown. There's nothing, it's all up on the hill, and it's, it's, it's sad when you look at the downtown of Mankato. But you can walk the downtown in St. Peter, and you can go to clothing stores, bridal shops, shoe stores. There's two or three antique stores. There's several jewelry stores in the same size area. It's the same size town as New Ulm. You go up to Bemidji, and there are probably three streets wide, four blocks long, and there's different businesses on every block. And I don't know how we attract one different business on a block.
We have two, like, home decor businesses now. I've been there the last two Saturdays to each of them. So I, I think that's a good addition to downtown.
I think it's a, there's a lot of talk generated by those two decor places. But we need a place, a few other places to, to bring people in. Because I, I see, I don't see people walking the streets now that it's nicer. You see a few people because they're going to get ice cream, and boy, that's a great business. The ice cream store is generating a lot of revenue, but again, it's a place to eat. They go there, they grab their dish, and they leave. They aren't, they aren't going next door. That's, and I think that needs to be looked at a little more intensely. If no one else has any comments, then I guess Dave can move on. Is anything else?
Expand a little bit on what you were saying when you said you thought it needed to be looked at with a different lens.
No, I, I think, you know, some downtown, well, the, New Ulm's downtown has, has changed. You know, we've lost most of our retail, and sometimes that is the type of market that we have. I mean, we're thirty miles from Mankato. That impacts us. You know, it's, you know, how much online is taking place impacts.
But St. Peter is closer to Mankato than New Ulm is, and they seem to have a very viable downtown.
And we have a lot of employees who come into the community to work that I'm sure are not using our downtown at all.
Yeah.
It seems, you know.
I was interested to hear what you had to say, just because I'm not a shopper. Retail stores aren't going to get me to the downtown. And having just spent the week in Bemidji, seeing their downtown, they didn't just have retail, they had things. We went down there to see an art show, the outside art, art stuff that they had.
The statues on the corners, right.
Yeah, yeah. And then going inside to, like, an art museum, art display. And then we went to a, a, a science place where they had a bunch of live animals that the kids could go in and interact with. Those are the things that are getting me.
They have a couple lovely flower shops downtown around the corner from Raphael's. They have a little art store back there besides the art one that's across the street from the lake. Yeah.
They had a huge variety of different things, not just shopping. Shopping is, it, just being somebody that's not much of a shopper, that's not what's going to get me to go downtown.
I, I agree. There's a lot of, there's places, though, that make you get out and walk the street.
Yeah, agreed.
That's my point.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Well, I think in, you know, the first item that we identified was to, you know, we need people generators, and that can take many different forms. I think, though, as you indicated, Bobby, it's, doesn't necessarily have to be retail. The other thing I would note is that, you know, Bemidji has got a, a college which provides, you know, a larger, a fairly large market. You know, they also are, don't have any other, you know, large cities in close proximity to them because they're kind of by themselves. So there's, sometimes there are, you know, other factors in play that can impact, you know, what is taking place.
Yes, I agree, but you can look at, and again, I'll bring up St. Peter. You can walk to the art gallery in St. Peter. You can walk to contents. You can walk to several different restaurants. There's, well, I guess the cheese, cheese shop is closed, but there's a lot of different places to walk into. I walk the street in St. Peter. It's, I don't necessarily walk it here. I'm sorry, Elwood.
Well, that's fine. I think, I mean, every, everything you're bringing up is, is good. Like Bobby was saying, you need other things down there, too, to generate the people. But me, one of the big things is St. Peter and Hutch that you mentioned, that's the main thoroughfare. So everybody's driving by those places or that block off where, if I'm going through town and I don't need something, I'm not going down there to just drive down through town and walk. I mean, we got to have something to bring them down there, but I think that's one of the big points, too, that Peter and Hutch, you drive right through the middle of town. That's where everything's at.
I agree with you, except I meet friends of mine that come from the cities, and we go to Hutchinson to meet, and because it's a place we can walk and shop and look and eat.
Yeah.
I think you can do that here. It's just different. I mean, you don't have, I mean, you have the grand. You have Ulm Sweet Ulm now. You have Sweet Haven Tonics that has events at it. You have the different bars that serve food. You have the ice cream shop. You have multiple clothing vendors. You have the, what's the, the good food market?
Co-op.
The co-op. I mean, they're not all, you got a, you got the rustic or whatever, the food, or the furniture, furniture place. You got Rush with entertainment possibilities. The movie theaters down there. So just be, they're not maybe all hitting on the right cylinder at the right time to have a big crowd constantly, but they're, all of those things are present. You know, they might not be open twenty-four, seven. They might not be, but I'm, I, I mean, you talk to the people that bar hop, and there's plenty of walking the streets between nine and midnight, I bet. I mean, that's not my crowd, but.
I agree with you. And the only thing I want to say is I don't think the focus should totally be on food and drink. I think it should be a little wider. That's just my opinion. Okay.
So maybe, just to follow up on that, focus more on the, the people generating businesses for the downtown area. I also would just add that, you know, we don't want any empty storefronts in downtown. So any, anybody we can get in there, we should get in there, no matter what they're proposing for that type of business.
Yeah.
Okay. The second small area plan was for East Airport. And its boundaries, let's just say, are kind of set by the Highway fourteen, County State Aid, twenty-seven, Fifth North Street, maybe, you know, goes all the way down to North Garden and all the way up to the, the west side of the, of the airport. Approximately eight hundred and forty acres. The current zoning is provided there. We have a lot of different zoning districts in that area. The current zoning is provided there, we have a lot of different zoning districts in that area. Brown, this area includes property that's currently in Brown County. There are four concepts and ideas that are presented for this area. There's an emphasis, I would say, on housing. But there also are some smaller areas for commercial, for industrial. And then we also have a fairly large or major park in this area that would, abut the airport. Would note that that was also in the 2007 comprehensive plan that was done. One of the organizations, youth organizations that is looking for a new home is the soccer association. And so something like this could assist them. It would also maybe help other organizations as well. There are a total of five different subject areas that are provided. And then staff would recommend approval of, of the plan as presented. Do you have any questions on this particular plan?
I did, I guess I'm going to throw one question. Did, did the expanding runway for the other runway, how did that affect some of the concepts that you were coming in? Or did it not? Did that expand the space that you could use for soccer or other activities?
No, the, the, the proposed park area would be on the east side of the primary runway. So it would not be impacted by the crosswind runway. Would note on this particular drawing that is on the video monitor that we actually have two different crosswind runway safety zones that we are required by law to show. So that's what is depicted there. And so that does impact land use in those areas, yes.
Thank you, does anyone else have any comments?
In picture, or on the depiction there, the cross check, there's no activity allowed. And in the single stripe stuff, there's reduced activity or what's the?
So there are two zones that are depicted in those, or those safety zones. The first is zone A and that's, there's nothing permitted in that area other than, you know, you can grow crops, you know, you can do things that don't result in a concentration of, of people. In zone B, you're allowed pretty much the land uses that are permitted in that zoning district, but they set density limits again. So, you know, like for buildings, it's like 10,000 square feet per acre or something. So you, you can't again concentrate things in those locations.
All right, thank you.
Anything, go ahead.
John, do you want to go ahead?
Upper Cottonwood?
Okay, the third area that we took a closer look at is called the Upper Cottonwood Area. And this, the area that we were looking at is entirely south of the Dakota West subdivision that has single family housing units up there. And all of the property is located within Brown County in their A1 agricultural zoning district. It's approximately 380 acres. On the west side, it's bordered by Flandrew State Park. On the right-hand side, it's bordered by some single family homes and then the Cottonwood River Bluffs. Yeah, east side. There, we were looking at four different types of land use areas in this Upper Cottonwood Area, which is parks and open space, and that's depicted as green on the, on the photo here, as well as low density residential, which is the yellow, and then medium density residential, which is the orange. And then the pink is the undeveloped area as we go south. Let's see, we had a number of different concepts and ideas in the Upper Cottonwood Area. And that's to provide a wide range of housing options that meet different needs, to provide amenities for everyday living. So one of the things that the consultants would recommend or want to provide as an option up there, since it's a fair amount away from like the nearest grocery store, could there be any kind of convenience neighborhood grocery incorporated into something in this, in this area in the future? To provide a neighborhood park with amenities for everyone, to build trails that connect throughout the network in, into green spaces. So one thing I wanted to point out here is that the hashed, black hash lines are proposed trails. So along the main road corridor, but also connecting the group camp side of Flandrew all the way over through the, the proposed future development into the Cottonwood River Bluffs in the east. Another concept was to build low impact development that works with the land, incorporate the natural assets that exist today into park space and other amenities to serve this area and the community. As you probably all are aware, if we were to do any development out here, there are some major utility infrastructure updates that would need to be done to serve residents that would live in that area. And one thing they, they, they pointed out in this concept plan is this green area on the north is where there's the potential for a water tower to go in the future. But they would like to also incorporate that utility into parks and open space and things like that as well. Staff would recommend, would recommend on this area plan that it would be approved as presented. We're open to any questions or comments you have on this concept.
Talk with the state on the development of Flandrew on that side? Because right now, there's really nothing over there, is there, other than maybe?
We have had those discussions. And right now, they want to leave it as is. And actually, they kind of look at it as kind of a, it's rented privately throughout the summertime or the warm season. And they kind of want to keep it that way, keep it a little bit quieter on that side. And we were surprised actually to find out that each weekend that is open during the warm season, it's rented. Oftentimes, it's rented within the first two days of it being opened up to people being able to rent it for the season. Another thing I wanted to point out on that, just because I think it's interesting for people to know, is that a lot of people that are going there are, are large families from outside of the New Ulm area. So it's actually bringing in people to our community that normally otherwise wouldn't be stopping here and, you know, touring New Ulm, touring our state parks. So it's, it's kind of a neat feature over there. So we want to respect their, their wishes on that side too.
Well, initially, when we walked that area back when we were doing the tours of each area, was that the October 19th? I don't remember when that was, but the park manager at that point had talked about possibly in the future connecting walking trails that go down into that side of the park. And that's kind of.
No, they're still open to that.
Still open to that?
Yep, they're still open to that. What, what I'm saying is they aren't, they aren't looking to develop this side of Flandrew State Park like they have on the other side of the river.
And I think they want to keep the, the group camp, you know, kind of by itself.
Private, yeah.
Yeah, and maintain that privacy.
And, and can I ask, probably inappropriately at this time, but I'm going to ask anyway. Park and Rec, have they had, do they have plans? I know that in other meetings, we talk about Park and Rec being tied and, and their land use. And they were doing a reevaluation that was part of the second part of our meeting tonight with the comp plan. But is this on a forward track for them to put more out there than there is? Because that's kind of what we had people at the meeting asking us about.
Well, one, one challenge we have in this area is the, well, all of the land that we're talking about is owned by a single property owner. Unless there are some changes there and the city were to be able to acquire property, for instance, for the water tower, you know, we're kind of at a standstill.
Okay. All right, that was just my, does anyone else have questions on the, this?
Is there, are there any concerns about the fact that there is only one access into this whole neighborhood? You know, if we grow the area, there, there's one point of access besides going around, you know, the, going out, right? That seems to be, I've, seems to be a concern to me, but maybe it's, it's not?
Well, this would be laid out, what, the streets that we're showing here are only conceptual. When this comes forward, I mean, this, if this happens within 60 years, 100 years, it's going to, it's going to take a while to develop this way. And the streets are going to be laid out, I'm sure, differently.
So Kate, are you referring to the fact that Cottonwood Street is the only means of access to this property? And, and a second means of access is the township road that goes out to a county road? And there really isn't a low cost solution to that problem. So I, I think what you see is probably what's going to be there for, for a long time. And unfortunately, in times of flooding, people that live in that area are going to have to drive around and take Center Street into, into town.
And there actually is a third township road that goes to the south. You end up, you end up, I think it's at.
25.
25, and then it goes towards Searl's Well Drilling, otherwise towards 13. Either way, it's a long drive on gravel.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it seems, you know, if, a real emphasis, and of course, like you said, this is a long, long-term plan. But if the emphasis is to put a lot of resources to developing the area when their access to it is, you know, limited, it's, it's an interesting situation.
Well, I think the population that would consider moving out there is definitely the low density side that wants space, they're willing to drive the extra 10 minutes. And that's my.
Well, the medium density is usually retired people in the town, twin homes and townhomes and things there. The lower density is going to be newer families, which brings up the point, are there places for them to bike other than on the road that's crowded and? Are there more, are there sidewalks in that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, any, any new development?
You're going to force sidewalks in, okay.
There's also, you know, we have a trail halfway up the hill.
Okay.
On Cottonwood Street.
Okay. Anything else? Northwest New Ulm Milford.
Okay, Northwest New Ulm Milford. This area is generally located between County State Aid Highway number 12, US Highway 14, west of the north property line of Walmart, Barron's Boulevard, Sopson Street, North Island Avenue, Casey Road, in the center of Section 11 in Milford Township and County State Aid Highway 29. So it's quite a vast area and it's approximately 972 acres. There are, there are a number of different zoning districts already that exist up in that area. The land use categories that you can see on the map here that are being planned for that area include parks and open space, which is green, industrial, which is shown in purple, commercial, which is shown in pink, high density residential, which is shown in red, medium density residential, again in orange, and low density residential, excuse me, in yellow. And then public, semi-public as well. There are a number, again, a number of different concepts and ideas for this area. And they are to develop a light industrial business park and to grow employment and industry. As you all are aware, most of our industrial areas are already closely fully developed already within the municipal city limits. And one of the main areas for that expansion would be in this area that we're, that we're discussing here and then to the north and west. And then between Highway 14 and County State Aid Highway, or County State Aid Highway 29. It would also be to create an industry hub that takes advantage of the railroad, airport and transportation network. If you look at the map, you can see we have the Canadian Pacific, Kansas City Railroad. Right, right there, it's kind of a, a line that runs on the northern part of this, this area. We would build new trails to connect these sites and their workers to the existing network. So there was an emphasis on if we are going to have this development of an industrial area, it also should be friendly to, to folks who want to drive their bike to work, for families to walk through. There would be sidewalks, that type of thing. It also had an emphasis on providing amenities for the employees. And what, what that means is like, is there, is there an open space? Is there a small nature, is there, are there walking paths within these larger industrial developments where employees can go and, and take a little break? And then we also had an idea or a concept to create a residential area between the Casey Road and the Canadian Pacific Railway. So on the map here. Staff would recommend approval as presented for this area plan as well. And again, we're open to questions and comments on this area.
I have a comment. Hello, I'm Christine Runk. I happen to be the clerk of Milford Township. And I'm also a significant landowner in Section 12 and Section 13 of Milford. I have lots of concerns about your plans and when you plan on doing this. Currently, we are actively, my husband and my family, involved in farming. It bothered me earlier when you talked about one of the other areas that you talked about in downtown that you wanted to grow business. Well, that made me feel like my business of farming is less important than your business here in New Ulm. Where we live is a century farm, actually, it's a sesquicentennial farm. Very historical property for New Ulm. One of the original founders of New Ulm bought that farm back in 1856. The original Turnfarine was there, there's a monument there that we maintain for Turner Hall. The first New Ulm post office was there, the first Brown County courthouse was there. My husband's great-grandfather was served as the state treasurer, a state senator. So the property is very, very important, not only to my family, but to my husband's previous, his ancestors, and to our two sons, who would like to come back and farm the land in Sections 12 and 13. So at this point in time, what bothers me is that, so if the Milford Town Board signs off on your addendum to this plan, what rights do the landowners have if they are unwilling sellers? What right do they have? If, if the town board has given their approval, sure, sure, you can annex this land. That doesn't seem quite right in America, that landowners don't get a say on how their land should be used when they still own it. The city should not be able to come in here and decide for us, well, we want to put in sewer and water. We think that, and according to your document, which I have in front of me with the maps, there are many things in here that don't jive with me. The Milford Town Board is going to be having another meeting regarding this. And at this point in time, I'm not sure we're going to sign. Something that the, the board has to decide. Because it does, it just seems to us that what rights do our, our farmers have? The city of New Ulm is already swallowed up. How many farms in Milford? Whether those people were willing or unwilling to sell. Whether those people were willing or unwilling to sell? Um, if, and then, of course, as I alluded to earlier, it's the historical part of, of the property. History is a big deal in New Ulm. Why would we want to sell to have you start carving up for houses and everything else? Doesn't seem right.
Okay, I think there's a, a misunderstanding here, ma'am.
All right.
Property owners not required to sell their property if they don't want to. These are, these are plans, which is something that is, uh, typical of any community, um, our size, um, that they would be going through. I would also note that a member of the Milford Town Board was, um, invited to participate and was a member of the project steering committee, so they had access to all of the materials that, um, that we're currently reviewing today. I also would note that a lot of these same areas that we're looking at now are also in our 2007 plan.
Which expires January 1 of 2025.
No, okay, so you're talking about a different document. You're talking about an orderly annexation agreement document. What we're talking about is a comprehensive plan.
And you're talking about the addendum to the original, um, document for orderly annexation. Am I not correct?
Okay, no, that's not correct. This is an addendum to the comprehensive plan. So we're talking two separate documents here. Um, and they, they really aren't, um, uh, related to each other. So, the comprehensive plan is a long-range plan, um, to look at, uh, you know, future possibility of growth for the city of New Ulm. The orderly annexation agreement is for property owners that want to annex their property into the city. It establishes a more accelerated, uh, approval process. That's all.
Well, when I'm reading your, um, annexation, orderly annexation from 2005, it expires on January 1, 2025. Now, am I to assume then that you want Milford Township to sign on, to renew this orderly annexation?
Um, I believe, um, our city manager has approached the, uh,
Yes, he has, but a decision hasn't been made yet.
Has asked if, um, if the township was interested in renewing that. That is correct.
Mm-hmm. And the decision has not been made yet. And then the, then the addendum piece of it, I mean, that's like, you, like you said, it's another separate document that we will have to sign. And what is the timeframe for you to develop Northwest New Ulm, Milford? Seems to me, um, other than downtown, it seems to me to be towards the top of your list. Am I correct in assuming that?
Okay, um, the, um, development of that area is, first of all, predicated on property owners being interested in selling their property for that purpose, or they can do the development themselves. There is no mandate that people in that area have to develop their property.
Well, boy, when I read your document, I think your language doesn't reflect that, from my point of view.
Well, the, the language in the document is similar to language that we had in the previous comprehensive plan and the plan before that. So, um, you know, it, it does not mandate that anyone has to sell their property or to develop their property. If you wish to continue farming, that's something that you can do.
But your document also says that, um, if we are in an area that the city is interested in, that we would have to get, obviously, we always have to get a building permit, but the city also has to review the building permit. So that, in, when you extrapolate that information, that tells me that then the city is going to tell landowners what to do with their land.
Okay, that, that is a provision that was in the orderly annexation agreement document.
Correct?
It is correct within the area that was designated, you know, for that purpose. So it's, it's not all of Milford Township, it's not necessarily, I don't know if, if it affects any of your property, perhaps it does.
Quite a bit, almost all of it. So, and I'm talking about Sections 12 and Sections 13 of Milford.
I, I would also note that, um, that provision only applies to, um, non-agricultural type of development, if that were to take place. Farm development, um, is exempted from, from that, uh, process.
But it also says in your document that we could never expand our farming operation in the designated area that you have in your addendum. It says that in there.
And, yeah, I guess I'm not familiar with that. You'd have to show me that.
Okay. We can meet afterwards, and I can show you the, just the different points that I have.
Okay, that'd be fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are we moving to the planning commissioner's considerations?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless there were any comments on this, this area. Okay. Okay, so the planning, uh, commission should consider these plans each, uh, separately. And in making your recommendations to the city council, the commission should determine if the draft small-area plans adequately recognize the existing assets within the plan area and leverages them as part of the plan's foundation for future success, listens to, considers, and responds to a range of stakeholder visions for the future, evaluates market research and demographics to understand past, present, and future considerations, addresses the specific assets, issues, and opportunities that exist in each of the plans, plan areas, and then finally presents strategies and sustainable incremental steps that offer reasonable improvements and serves as a platform for further actions. So the consideration procedure, um, at the conclusion of this public hearing, the planning commission should, uh, approve a motion acknowledging that the public hearing was held for each plan and is, uh, hereby declared closed. And then two, following this motion, the planning commission has the following options. You could recommend approval of the small-area plans as presented. You could recommend approval of the small-area plans with amendments or changes. Or lastly, you could, uh, defer action on one or more of the small-area plans and request additional information or changes. A decision, uh, to recommend approval of the small-area plans, uh, should be made by resolution. We have two attachments. We have the, the full, uh, four-area plans document, and then attachment number two, um, is the resolution. A staff recommendation would be that the planning commission approve the individual motions reken- recommending that the city council adopt each small-area plan as, as a, uh, appendix to the comprehensive plan dated on June 24th for the city of New Ulm, Minnesota, and subject to minor technical and text corrections.
Question, if I answer it for a second? It, it's noted up here that, uh, evaluates market research and demographics to understand past, present, and future conditions. Were those things done, uh, when looking at some of these plans? For instance, like in the, uh, area to develop the airport, put in there that you would like to develop, um, lodging and hotels? Do we know if the, if we have? To me, it seems shocking that we wouldn't have a need for that, but I know a few years past, the hotel operators had said that we couldn't accommodate more hotels. Has that changed?
We're currently in the process of updating a hotel study, actually performing a new hotel study, and that's gonna provide direction for this area.
Okay. Okay, and then one other question is, I was understanding that this plan was a short-term plan, but then you had made a comment that one of these things wouldn't be developed for 60 to 100 years.
Oh, yeah.
What is the, what is the timeline for these plans?
Um, what? Well, the timeline is until they're fully developed. But what I am telling you is that if there are areas to be developed in and around New Ulm, these would be the areas that could be developed into the future. That's why there was special emphasis on these areas.
So there's not exactly a timeline?
No.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sorry, and then we had three, uh, potential motions. You could, uh, you could recommend a motion to approve each of the four, uh, small-area plans. Uh, I recommend a motion, um, to deny or defer action, so.
Okay. You want a motion?
Since this is, uh, such a short flash-to-bang, if you will, of, from being able to review it, and is the first time, I think that a lot of us have gotten time to actually talk about it, and then there's some constituent, constituent concerns or confusion, I, uh, I make a motion to defer action on approval of all the plans until further information has been smoothed out and we have a chance to review.
Is there a second to that motion? We're still in the public hearing phase, would you? Can I, do you wanna defer that till we close the public hearing phase?
No, that's my motion.
I have a motion on the floor with no second. So the motion is denied?
Well, sorry if I'm mistaken, but just to clarify, it sounded like the motion was to defer making a decision on, on approval or denial of these plans at this time, and I'm assuming to the July meeting? Or something like that?
I don't have a second to the motion. The motion is denied.
The motion fails.
So, moving forward, we need a motion to close the public hearing? Is that what you asked me for? May I have a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now, I need a motion to carrying one of these three points. The motion to approve completely, the motion to approve portions with addendums, or a motion to defer action. I'm looking for a motion on one of those three things. Motion to defer action failed.
I'd make the motion, uh, to recommend that the city council approve each of the four small-area plans as an addendum to the comprehensive plan dated June 2024 for the city of New Ulm.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to request, recommend the city council approve each of the four small-plan areas as an addendum to the comprehensive plan dated June 2024 for the city of New Ulm. Excuse me, subject to the following amendments. There were no amendments, okay. All in favor?
Wait, uh, this should be a resolution.
I'm sorry, what?
It should be done by resolution, so a roll call should be done.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. Do we call the roll?
Bobby Fur?
Yes.
Larry Mack?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Kate Mako?
Yes.
Michelle Selner?
Yes.
Joe Schatzko?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Excuse me. Now, this appears to the city council, when?
Next Tuesday.
Okay.
Which would be July 2nd.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Comprehensive plan. First item is to receive Chapter 10 implementation. City? Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, uh, the request for action here is, action items, um, in Chapters 4 through 9 of the comprehensive plan to be designated for completion in the near term. Uh, the applicant is the Community Development Department. Uh, for a little background, uh, you were previously provided with a portion of the implementation chapter of the city of New Ulm's comprehensive plan. Um, and then we had asked you to review the implementation ta- uh, tasks listed on Table 10.1 for Chapters 4 through 9, um, of that. And then I sent you all an email asking you to, to rate at least your top two, uh, in each one of those chapters, and then send that back to me, and we would there, we would then after, uh, compile that information and then bring it back to you tonight and show you the results. And we do have as attachment one, the implementation, implementation table rankings. And of course, we will keep your, uh, selections private unless you feel otherwise. The, uh, note the timeframe at the bottom of the page of the implementation table. We have three categories. We have ongoing, which means it's, it's in progress. We have near-term, which means in the next one to three years, we wanna focus on that. And then we have midterm, which is, um, in the next four, five years down the line. So, um, the planning commission has, uh, a couple considerations, uh, with this item. They should consider the top two highest-ranked action items listed for each chapters, Chapters 4 through 9 and Table 10.1 of the comprehensive plan. And if the planning commission agrees on the highest-ranked action items in each chapter, they should recommend sending these to the city council for their review. But before we get to that, um, I, if you want, I could pull up the tables, um, right now, and we can go through kind of the top two of each category. Should we do that? Okay. But then after that, we also, uh, we went through and took the highest ranked overall as well, and we have a, a list for that. Help me, I'll get this closer. Where's my zoom button here? Where is it? Bottom right? Thank you.
The wall speaks.
Appreciate that. So, uh, first of all, thank you all for providing feedback on this. I, I, I really appreciate that. And I found it very interesting that a lot of you shared the same, um, kind of top priorities. Um, and in, in land use, um, there were two, actually two, uh, that tied for the first or the top priority, which would be to update the zoning ordinance to support the comprehensive planned, plans, land use, goals, and strategies, and then also to prepare a capital improvement plan for the next five years. So, you know, if there's a tiebreaker, that would be one and two. But, you know, just to have, uh, a number, a number two down, the next one that received the highest points was to work with Cottonwood and Milford Townships to reto- renew orderly annexation agreements within the growth slash focus areas. In Chapter 5, Housing, um, the highest ranked there was to maintain a residential rehabilitation grant and loan program to preserve and enhance the city's existing, uh, housing stock. Right now, um, that's through the, the EDA. Um, I think it's a pretty successful program, but clearly, there's interest on the planning commission to continue that or enhance that type of program. The second highest ranked was to encourage development of market-rate, low-to-medium-density housing that meets the needs of current and new, new residents. And I think, uh, And I think whether that one makes the top choices or not, that's going to continue to be worked on continuously.
John, I have a, just, oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
Just a comment, I was pleased to see that we agreed on so many of these topics. I was really disappointed to see that there's not a lot of support for that investigating the establishment of a housing trust fund. I'm not sure where that idea came from, and I didn't know really what it was, so I went to look it up a little bit. Yeah, and it's, so I pulled up a sheet from the urban development, national urban development that talks about what it is, and it's a trust fund for new affordable housing production program that complements existing and local efforts to increase and preserve the supply of decent, safe, and sanitary affordable housing for low-income homes and including homeless families. I don't, again, I don't know enough about this, and I don't know if the city has looked at it, but it seems to be such a big piece of what we've been talking about throughout this plan. And then I see that it's listed as being a mid-four to five years down the road, instead of something that's more ongoing, and I just felt it just really fit with everything else that we've been talking about. I agree. You know, as far as affordable housing, and so I, more information or thoughts on...
I believe the city of Mankato has instituted a program like this, and theirs is maybe two, three years old now. So, matter of fact, there just was something in the newspaper, Mankato Free Press, can maybe see if we can find that and give you some background on that.
Yeah, it seems as though it supports what you're already doing. It's additional funds and grants to support affordable housing, and, you know, that's what we've been talking about, and so I...
Did it say whether, I probably shouldn't ask you, because you're as ignorant about it as probably I am, and so, the city of Mankato, is that funded by the city of Mankato, or have they gone through state funding or federal funding for the use of this grant?
No, I believe it's something that is locally established, and resources are probably a good part are local, not that you probably could augment it, I suppose, with some federal and state funding if it was allowed to be used for that purpose, but I would say it's the local, probably isn't a whole lot different than the New Ulm Area Foundation, except that the focus is on housing.
It said the program was established back in 2009, and then there are new program rules in 2015, but it's an ongoing program. I just felt that it fit with what we've been talking about over these last months, and I would like to know a little more about what the city is thinking about as far as that, because it did make part of our housing plan, so.
Okay, well, we can see what we can find out about it. This actually was strictly a staff idea, and it really hadn't gone much further than, you know, putting it as maybe something that we should be looking at.
It was a great staff idea.
I mean, obviously, I'm as uneducated as most about this, but I just feel like it's something that might support what the city's trying to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Makes a lot of sense. I would, I do want to point out too, just so we're all clear, priorities, you know, we're ranking the top couple priorities in each category, but we will be working on it regardless if it makes those top two. So we'll still be taking a closer look at that and fleshing that idea out as well.
Thank you.
This is the most interesting one to me, in transportation. The highest ranked in all of the transportation action items was to prepare the city and its citizens for emerging transportation trends that may impact how people travel in the future. Great, fantastic, but, and most, there are a lot of people that rank that as their number one, and then number two was to continue to improve safety for all travelers at intersections with unsafe conditions or ones with an accident history. So, yeah, but that was interesting, preparing us for future emerging transportation. That, we'll see what that ends up looking like.
It's about roundabouts.
What's that?
It's all about roundabouts.
Yeah.
That, you know, we finally got a bus system, which is as old as it is, but it's an emerging traffic.
Actually, I think the trends that are being referenced here even go beyond that. It's driverless cars. It's where you have, your car is tied into the internet so that it knows what's happening up in front of you and behind you. I mean, it's...
It's not working in San Francisco.
Well, to some respects, it is. But, so it was just that transportation systems are going to be changing. Now, whether it comes out to, you know, this far out of the metro area, I primarily see it as something you're going to find in the metro area, we'll have to wait and see, but that's kind of what the intent was, and throwing that in there.
With additional items, you know, things that we just need to take on, like having enough electric EV charging stations, which actually is already, within the process of this comprehensive planning process, there's been, I believe, two more EV stations, one on the south end and one on the north end, that have been installed since this whole process started, so. Chapter number seven was economic development, and there were, again, two tied for the highest ranking. One is to identify and recruit businesses and entrepreneurs to the downtown and other appropriate areas that would provide a mix of local services and retail goods adequate to meet the regional demand and provide a suitable quality-of-life environment for area residents. The second one was to maintain an active business retention program and provide assistance necessary to facilitate positive, a positive local business climate. And then the second, second one ranked, second ranking was to develop a coordinated and focused marketing plan for economic development and business recruitment and implement the plan upon its completion. Some of these items are already being worked on currently, and, but, this is great information to know where the Planning Commission's priorities are at, and we can share that, again, with City Council.
I just want to make a note that, speaking a little bit on Kate's point, I didn't feel like I was voting against other things just because I was prioritizing. You just have to choose two things that you're, that you think need to be prioritized. You know, like if you look at the transportation, I think it's a high priority to make sure that there's a New Ulm Safe Routes to School Plan. I just didn't put that as a priority, because to me, that was coupled with continue to improve safety for all travelers. So some of the things I had noted seemed like they went together, which is naturally correlated with each other.
I think what this might provide for us, at least the staff and the City Council, is, you know, we have the strategic plan coming up. The strategic plan consultants are already looking at what you guys have done for the comprehensive plan and incorporating information from that plan into the strategic plan, so they're going to want to know some of these things, because they're going to, these are things that we should be focusing on probably in the very short term, and they want that information for the strategic plan.
So it's not like we voted against the other things?
In Chapter Eight, Parks and Recreation, I was really pleased that you all found that working with partners to evaluate the potential opportunities and expand recreational activities along the Minnesota and Cottonwood Rivers, that ranked highest. And then there were two tied for Prepare a Parks Plan as a long-term planning document, that was one, and then review recommendations found on the trail map and prepare an evaluation for each trail segment, followed by the development of a priority list of the projects to be completed in the next 10 years. Now, there was a comment that came up that if there's a Parks Master Plan, tell me if I'm interpreting this correctly, that we should be reviewing the recommendations found on the trail map, and that should be part of the Park Master Plan process? Am I summarizing that correctly? Okay. So that's a good point, but maybe what we'll use this document for is to make sure that that's a high priority in that master plan, that we take a look at that. Did I summarize that? Okay.
I should point out, I was editorializing when I gave him my points.
In Chapter Nine, which is Community Facilities and Utilities, the highest ranking was to collaborate with the PUC Energy Awareness Commission and other partners to enhance the suitability of the city's infrastructure, and then ranked below that was to require the annexation of property into the city prior to the extension of utility services by the city or PUC, which I found interesting that there was a lot of interest and emphasis on that one as well. A lot of people ranked that as their second one. So that's the conclusion of the staff's report. I do have another document that shows all of the number ones. I don't know if you want to go through that, or you just want me to pull it up on the screen, but we probably don't need...
I do have one question, and it's probably limited to a very small group of people in this room, but we were invited to attend the sustainability meeting, and I did attend. I saw Joe there, I don't know if any, Linda might have been there too. I was very pleased to see that that ranked very high amongst us all, even if very few of us attended, because I thought it was an interesting meeting, and I wished more people would have attended, especially people in the industry, and it was nice to know that they had 3M and Kraft and other people for the business part, because it was quite informative on the projects that these people were working with, and I might add that they are looking for people to work on that, ongoing sustainability through the PUC, so if anybody's any interest, they should contact either Chris Manterfeld or...
Derek?
Yeah. It was an interesting presentation.
Okay, thank you. Again, we have one attachment here, which is the implementation table with rankings. I also have this slide up here, but I just went through all of these. I don't know if you want me to go through them again or not, but these are all the number ones on one page, and that's actually not in your packets for this meeting. Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the top two highest-ranked action items in each chapter found in Table 10.1 of the comprehensive plan, and that the City Council adopt the Commission's rankings. Now, even though we have a couple ties, I would like to send the top two, or sorry, the tied top number ones and number two with, to the City Council, just so they see what that is. There are two potential motions, one to recommend that the City Council adopt the rankings of the top two action items listed in each chapter, again, chapters four through nine and Table 10.1 of the comprehensive plan dated June 24th, June 2024 for the city of New Ulm, Minnesota, and then we also have a recommendation to not, recommend that the City Council not adopt the rankings of the top two action items. That concludes the staff report.
Are there any further questions? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to recommend that the City Council adopt the rankings of the top two action items listed for each chapter in Table 10.1 of the comprehensive plan dated June 2024 for the city of New Ulm, Minnesota.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the City Council decisions concerning planning commission matters in June 2024.
Okay, at the June 4th meeting, they had a presentation by Representative Bolt Lemink on the strategic plan. They also authorized the expenditure of $56,000 to acquire Georgia's ballroom from the state of Minnesota. At the June 18th meeting, they approved a license agreement between the city and Dwight and Denise Hughes for the use of a four-foot area of the unused South Highland Avenue right-of-way. That's adjacent to Lot 10, Lombrick subdivision, that's at One Indian Point Drive. There was some discussion about the possibility of that maybe being a variance request, but maybe it's been addressed this way. John is a little bit more familiar with that one than... You know what the status of the, he was, has that matter been fully resolved? No?
Aye.
Okay. I guess we'll find out from John when he comes back. That would conclude the staff report.
We have no Heritage Preservation Commission activities? Is there any other business or waiting for John?
Is he coming back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know that you have to, I don't think there's anything else that requires...
Okay.
If you wish.
Hearing that there's no further action required, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you for attending.